I'd like to welcome you all to the September voting meeting of the Executive Board of Directors. Amazingly, we did not have an executive session this evening, so I'll announce that as noteworthy. You will all have an opportunity later on to make comments. The first item on the agenda is recognition of some professionals who have been on board since tenure. So I would like to announce those names. Elise Augenbach, Laura Menick, Laura Cosens, Catherine Abel, Elizabeth Heck, Nicola Klein, Marianna Lake, Sean Reese, Erin Stoughton, and Brandon Ziegler. I'd like to extend our congratulations to all those individuals and welcome them forward. That is an achievement. Things really look great. Now, we will have the pleasure of hearing Dr. Fries tell us how things are going over the break.
Good evening. It's been a very busy start to the school year, as they have in my board report. We have a total of 594 students, that does not include the red fox.
I can't believe you didn't enroll that fox.
We did not enroll the fox. I am happy to say that we have not seen it, not since the first day, but everything has been fine. We did go out and look for him. Dr. Phillips, myself, and Rob was there as well. Rob did a very nice job calling different companies to come out. As far as we know, the fox is happy with his family, and it's been a good start, but...
He actually lives behind my house.
Does he really live behind?
He's a world family squirrel, you know.
Do you have any idea what the state reimbursement for a fox on the roll is?
I don't know, but I figure that he wanted to come because we have a brand-new schedule, and I think he wanted to participate in the schedule and our Eagle Block. I really think that's what it was. Five hundred ninety-four students, it's certainly the lowest number that we've had since we opened. I can remember days where we had seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred and thirty students. Last year, we ended with around five hundred and thirty-seven, I'm sorry, six hundred and thirty-seven students. So, five hundred ninety-four, it is a nice number, gives us an opportunity to do many things with our students, keeps our numbers down a little bit in math, but it is really, it's been an interesting start to the school year. As I mentioned in the beginning, we have a brand-new schedule, and that has been interesting. The schedule that we had had in the past, we had in place for, I'd say, about nine years. And you get used to the lunchtimes, you get used to the start of the school day, and I had no idea how used to the old schedule I was until we put this new one in place. All of the lunches have changed, the start, the beginning of the day has changed, the end of the day has changed, just many different things in place. We worked very hard over the course of last year with our committee. Maggie Wright has really helped me, and, as I said, a lot of things have gone into the schedule, and it was certainly a great team effort. And you put it in place in the first two days, everything has gone well, third day, fourth day, everything is going well. There's little things that we have found, and we've had to patch a few holes here and there, just things that, just normal things as to just the beginning of the day and how we want things to look, but it has really been a good start, and we've been very, very pleased. And honestly, it is, it's a tough day. You get in right away, the teacher's day starts at seven forty-five. At eight o'clock, the kids come right off the bus, and in the past, eight o'clock, they would come in and they would go to the gym, they would go to the cafeteria, they would go to morning reading club, they'd go to teachers' classrooms for help. Now, they're coming right in at eight o'clock. Some are going to breakfast, but the large majority, probably about ninety percent of them, are going right down into the classrooms. They've got twenty minutes of time with the teachers, gives the teachers a chance to touch base with the kids, answering homework questions they have, do some homework activities with them. It's a good start, and then by eight-twenty, they're right out of homeroom and right into language arts. I have one team that has special, the rest of them go right into language arts for their day. We've got some students after language arts who have math, but it's been, as I said, it's been a very good start. With the schedule, we're the first building to ever go to an eight-day schedule, and that has been terrific. As I mentioned to you in the spring, with an eight-day schedule, it gives us an opportunity to have the normal specials, art, music, that's added to the library, the first four days of the cycle, and then the back half of that, the days five through eight, we will have, we have additional art, we have additional music, then they have health now, and they also have STEM. Steve Diver is a STEM teacher, and we seriously lucked out by having Steve. Steve was terrific. Steve had an excellent reputation at Watten Creek. He's an outstanding teacher, and kids were really excited to go in there. I think an opportunity to even just stand out in the hallway, you can tell kids are excited about going in and participating with STEM, and talk to Steve, and some of the equipment that he has in that room is just terrific, and you can tell he's excited about learning, and you can tell the kids are excited about learning as they're going in, as they're coming out. And that's what we want to see. And I can tell you, both boys and both girls, they can't wait to go to a STEM class, which is really nice. And music is the same way with the additional music and the additional arts. So, you know, the specials are a live break, and it's a good thing. And I tell you, as I said, the schedule is, it's a tough one. The teachers really do a terrific job, and I can't possibly say enough about our teachers who have worked hard, it's in the government, but they have worked hard to adapt to the new schedule and to learn it. And there's a lot of things that are involved, and there's a lot of moving pieces throughout the course of the day, but it's an effort that everybody has to put forth every day and then do work. We are just about ready to get through our second cycle, which is terrific, so we'll be just about ready to hit day sixteen, which is an amazing thing. The first eight days of the cycle, we were good. Second eight days of the cycle, we're still good, but we have our famous, we're hoping to have this Eagle Block, which Maggie's going to be talking about in a few minutes. Just a couple of things, just want to hit some high points here with student achievement. This is our third year with our math program. We had some math training today. Turk was out, working with our teachers. We have a new addition, the third edition of our math program, and it's a little different than what they had used in the past, and the teachers are adapting to it. So it's a very positive meeting, and an opportunity to spend some time this morning listening to the presentation. Martha was out, Martha's last name, but she was, she's just terrific. The teachers really like her. And it was very positive, and teachers were participating in some of the activities and actually learning how to do it with the students, so that was very nice. We are in our fifth cohort for the Penn Literacy Network, a PLN training that we've had. This is the fifth year that I've come up in front of you and talked about this. We're very proud of it, and the unfortunate thing is that this is the last year for it. The grant funding has unfortunately run out, but the really good thing is some spots actually opened up, and it looks like I'm going to have just about all of one of our teachers in the building trained in PLN, which is terrific. And that one person, we can turnkey it and help her as well. But the really good thing about the Penn Literacy Network is we have a lot of writing in both language arts, math, science, actually, language arts, math, science, and social studies, especially science and social studies, and that's one of the things that we wanted to see. And our teachers are coming back, they're talking about it in their teams, and literacy has really, I would say, kind of spread out into science and social studies, so it's terrific. There's a lot of writing going on in the building. The other thing that I have down here is our Character Counts campaign. About three years ago now, so four years ago, our Art and Residence Group started this, and last year, we kind of made it larger. We started actually a Character Counts Committee, and this is our second year of it being fully wide, and the focus has been on anti-bullying and pro-social activities with our kids. Last year, we had many assemblies. Last year, we tied our Arts and Residence Presentation Program to it. And last year, the last meeting that we had, our teachers kind of threw out a challenge to both Maggie and to myself, and said, "This is terrific, this is a good program, but the one thing that's missing is we need team building with the kids." We needed it in the beginning to try to mesh things together, and we were able to work with Dr. Davies, who was able to help us with some funding, actually, or good funding. And we have team building that we are offering now to the fifth and sixth grade. We had training on it from a woman by the name of Crystal Lee, who worked with us last year with this program. She came out on Friday and worked with the Character Counts Committee, and we went through there's about twenty-eight or twenty-nine activities that we could actually do with the students during the team building activities. And she taught it to all of the members of our Character Counts Committee, and then during the early release day, we turned around and did team building with the teachers in the building, which gave them a little bit of an idea, flavor for what they're going to be doing with the students on the team building days. We'll have a fifth grade team building day and a sixth grade team building day, which I really think should be terrific. We had team building many years ago, and because of some of the budget cuts, that was something that we stopped, and it's something that we note that was missing. We're able to bring this back now, and I really think it's going to help with character. We'll be able to tie it to our Character Counts Campaign, and we'll be able to keep going back to it throughout the year. Teacher observations, we are just about ready to get started with that. We have a chance to get into classrooms, many classrooms, we're going to continue to do that. One of our major goals this year for Wrighton is to be a lot more visible at the beginning of the classrooms. Last year, we were doing a lot of work with the schedule and a lot of different things, and this year, we had said that what we really wanted to try to do is be as visible as possible at the beginning of the classrooms, and that's terrific. I'm going to turn your attention over to Maggie, who has the fun portion of it.
I get the privilege of talking to you a little bit about the programs and initiatives that are going on at Wrighton. One of those Dr. Fries talked to you a little bit about is our Eagle Block. So Eagle Block was, it's a thirty-minute block of period, or period at the end of the day, with opportunities for students for learning, for remediation, enrichment, and addressing a variety of needs. Last year, several of us went out and started looking at this in different schools, and came back in with the committee and took the best of what we found, and were able to add this thirty-minute block to the end of the schedule for this. So the committee was very excited about it, and they set the goal of starting it on the second cycle of the school year. So we were two days late. We started actually on the eleventh day. Prior to that, we were able to roll this out to the parents, roll it out to the students, and get the nearly six hundred students signed up for the activities of our eight-day cycle. There are six days that they do this at the end of the day, so that's six hundred students times six activities. So it was quite an undertaking, but everybody has pulled together to do this. It's really, it's supposed to be, you know, and it is, a great time for our students. We're still learning and working on it, but so far, we feel it's been very, very successful. It is a time mainly math remediation, we wanted to fit that in the schedule, so that's a big part of it. So we're offering math masters for some fifth-grade students and some sixth-grade students in the schedule there. We also were able to put our music programs here, so chorus, band, and orchestra take place during this time. The band used to come in the mornings before school started, so by offering it at this time, it really opens it up for more students to be able to play an instrument and participate if they'd like to, and we've had really good response with it. We're juggling where to put the chorus, the band, and the orchestra, and they're all rehearsing at the same time. We have the use of the gym and the cafeteria and the music rooms going, and it's a challenge for the music teachers are wonderful, working together to problem solve. We also use this time, besides the remediation for math and also the music programs, we're looking for perhaps students who need help with organizational skills, have that opportunity to work in small groups with a teacher that is working specifically on helping them to get organized and packed up at the end of the day. On social skills, we have, again, a small group where the goal of the teacher working with the students is to work on their social interactions and cooperation and working together. And then also for anxiety, one of the concerns that teachers had expressed is so many students come with stress and anxiety, so providing them kind of an end-of-the-day opportunity to be comfortable and to feel at ease, and so these are some of the goals that we are, we've been able to put in place. Along with that, we have, actually, we're offering approximately twenty-five different choices a day in activity. So we have students that are also doing with Mr. Diver Cardboard Construction Crew, we have wiffle ball, we have, oh, let's see, we have newspaper going on, we have Reading Olympics during this time, someone's doing exploring myths and mythology. Karen Tamura has this fascinating Wrighton CSI where kids are problem-solving together. It's really great what we've seen. It's only a thirty-minute block of time, we can't solve everything, but it's really, we really like the way it's working out. For teachers during this time, they are also able to have some team meeting time. We're able to schedule teachers together at certain blocks, including the special ed teacher, so that if Vicky Williams needs to meet with them, there's a time that she can, and if other teachers need to meet, we can use this time for, we can get coverage for them if we need to. We are also having some what we call professional time, or pro time, and that is, again, the time where if a teacher needs to meet for a variety of reasons, they're able to use this time for collaboration and working together. The teachers, one of their goals also during this time was to be able to bond with the students more and spend some time really engaged, talking to students with things other than just strictly the curriculum. So that's one of the things that they're, we're trying to be able to shape for them too, and to share some of their personalities, because we found research shows that's so beneficial for the students also. It's still a work in progress, but I think we've gotten to a very successful start, so... The Learning Focus Collaborative Meetings is one of also our initiatives, and that is where our staff continue to work on professional development collaboratively. We do that during our early release times and also during that pro time. It's a time where Karen Denunzio will come in and work with all of the staff, Stephanie Deal will also come in, and also the teachers are able to work on things that they need to work on or we need to, we have initiatives for them also. But it is centered on professional development that is collaborative. Then our third bullet there, the Pro-Social Anti-Bullying Program. Dr. Fries spoke of our Character Counts program there. We started really with a committee last year, and I believe it had started as a school board initiative too, that we incorporate an anti-bullying, pro-social program, and it was built through the specialists, were based on caring, cooperation, and citizenship. We kind of focused in on that. Last year, we had the professional lessons that were designed for our students. The teachers and the committee worked to incorporate these in through a series of assemblies and then lessons as a grade level, or as a school, and then lessons as individual teams. We have banners up, different things we've done. This year, we are working on the team building, and there were some things that the teachers who got feedback from them, and that which we are now trying to build upon what we started, but feedback's been, again, very positive from the teachers, and we hope that with this... Oh, and the advisor block. So I told you that Eagle Block was six days at the end of the day of our eight-day cycle. The other two days are our advisory period, and that is a time, the teachers had said that they wanted, their students had brought a lot of great questions when they had the pro-social lessons, and they really would like to have had more opportunity to discuss these questions. They can do that during advisory time. They could also use this time to work on individual needs within their classroom, if there's an issue on the playground, and then what it's review, what it means to be, you know, a good friend. They also were hoping to use some of that time to do some community service activities, where they've talked to us about maybe some things for veterans or other nonprofits in the area, so... That's it. Thank you.
And lastly, just some of the activities that we have. We've had the Dairy Queen knife, which was very well attended. We had several teachers that were in the dump tank, that went very well. I did not go out, but Dr. Wright was there for an hour, made dumb delivery, over, over, yeah.
We didn't tell you guys, because I didn't mean the line to be that much longer.
The other thing we're excited about, we do have, last year, we had our first author visit, and this year we're going to have a second one. It was so popular last year, there's a man by the name of Peter, I think I pronounced this wrong, Laringis, not Laringis? And he is the author of several books, some of his more popular ones are The Sword Thief, The Viper's Best, Best Birds Rising, and The Dead of the Night. So we're looking forward to him coming out and talking to our students. Last year's author visit just couldn't have been any better, so we're looking forward to another one next year as well.
If you hear any questions, Rebecca Fries. So far, you have Carter's endorsement, so you're okay so far.
Thanks, Greg and Maggie. I just want to recognize that you guys have put a lot of work into that schedule, that Activity Block is one of the first that I've seen really up and functioning, and I know a lot of work went into it, so we just appreciate your efforts, and I look forward to updates on how well that's going. Thanks.
Mrs. Gaidish is going to give us information on the budget timeline and the actual index.
It was still last year. Or so this year.
September marks the start of a new budget cycle because per Act One, the index, the Act One Index is published in the PA Bulletin, September ten. It's two point five percent. PD will notify all school districts what their Act One Index or adjusted Act One Index will be. I've calculated it to be three point three percent for fiscal seventeen eighteen budget. This is a work in progress because Dr. Phillips, I have more discussions with him in business function about how we want to conduct the budget meetings. So those dates are not established yet, but as September goes along and October, still planning on doing the preliminary budget process, where we adopt a preliminary, and then go into the final budget process in the spring. The dates are a little different than last year because these dates really are driven by when the municipal election occurs. So we'll start taking a serious look at the preliminary budget, but before that, I will be looking at the exceptions to see if there's a possibility we'll have exceptions to qualify for special education, retirement, and constructions, construction debt. So I'll be keeping you, I'll update you in October, the status of those in November. So what I've highlighted here are some dates for you just to keep in mind. January, excuse me, February fourteenth is the date that we, the board, would have to adopt a preliminary budget. That would have to be a special voting meeting. Again, the dates are all driven by the municipal election. Of course, I look at what the Schedule Board dates are. Also, something that occurs every four years, I've added to the budget timeline, is we will have to establish the tax collector compensation. The deadline for that is February fifteenth. So this fall, we will have some discussions about that. Again, just going straightforward to May, the proposed final budget, we will be adopting that May fifteenth, May sixteenth is the municipal primary election, that's Tuesday, so when we build a calendar for meetings in two thousand seventeen, we'll have to keep that in line. Maybe making that board meeting a Monday or Wednesday, so that has to be worked out. And then June twentieth would be the final budget adoption, June twentieth of two thousand seventeen. Again, I'll be rolling out the budget process to building administrators in October, and looking at the exceptions to make sure that the board does want to adopt a preliminary budget. Finally, the calculation of our adjusted Act One Index. The Act One Index published in the Penn Bulletin is based upon the statewide average weekly wage and the employment cost index. It's two point five percent, up from two point four percent last year. Our market value rate ratio, because it is higher than forty percent, we do get a bump, which is why our adjusted index is three point three percent. So applying that index to our current billage of thirty-two point two-one-eight-seven would give mill inch for the seventeen eighteen budget of thirty-three point two-seven-five-six, or about a mil increase. And the value of a mil is one point three, and I think I probably cut off the line there. The index increase would generate a little over one point four million, because it's more than one mil. I lost the line. So that's just a brief summary of the timeline and what the Act One Index is for seventeen eighteen. Are there any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate it very much. Now, it's time to give the opportunity for any visitors or residents in the community residence or staff to make any comments they'd like to make, if they have any questions. Seeing no one meeting board, we will continue on. Adoption of minutes. We have three sets this evening. First is from the special board meetings held on August ninth. I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Are none all in favor of approving the August ninth minutes? Please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the board workshop minutes of August ninth. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Do you think there's a second?
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the August ninth workshop meeting minutes? Please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, we have the August sixteenth voting meetings minutes. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the August sixteenth voting meetings minutes? Please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are all approved. Treasurers' Report?
I move the Treasurers' Report for Action Counts of School District Financial Statements for the Period Ending eight thirty-one twenty sixteen for following financial statements on the tax, year-to-date summary of revenue and expenditures, core funds, setting of assets, liabilities, and fund balances, payroll and friends benefit summary, investment statements, and student activity net or in front.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving Treasurers' Report? Please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the consideration of policy 609, investment district funds. This is the second reading. Therefore, I will entertain a motion to approve the policy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the policy 609? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the policy? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The policy is approved. Dr. Hamburger, business functions?
Item A, bus transportation. I move the board of directors authorize the administration to temporarily contract for bus transportation on an as-needed basis for athletic and other extracurricular and field trips. And we'll utilize bus services at BCIU, New Roads, or Klein Transportation.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Questions regarding, I noticed that we've utilized the Klein company already for a few trips. Are we using whoever is available that day as that kind of priority, since there's a discrepancy in the cost reach for them? So, whoever has the most availability issue?
Right. We schedule dates for BCIU and New Roads, and it has to do with availability. We started with BCIU because the pricing is, you know, economical.
Hey, no, no pushback from the union on this? Or they just can't provide us with the?
P's or, for early departures, and we don't have?
We don't have enough. Okay, fair.
And do we know how long does it go on? Like, when are bus drivers who are on leave will be coming back?
We hope that one of them will be back from the medical leave for the winter season. We're not sure about the other one. We are, some people are in motion to be trained, so, and maybe, I don't know the schedule for the winter sports yet. I mean, the fall, we, there's 180-some trips that we will actually accommodate for athletics during the fall. The winter goes down, but the fall is very active. So, I, you know, between getting drivers back and hiring more, training more, I think we'll be in a better position.
Does the, does one of the tech schools provide the ways for people to become drivers? I thought, I thought I saw that somewhere, somewhere in the tech schools.
Yeah, the BCTC has currently a CDL school, what I was talking about, yeah. That's what I was saying. From the IU hand.
The IU also.
The IU does training for, specifically for bus drivers.
So, so has anyone?
We had someone attend during the summertime.
So, is there any other, have we gotten any other people that might, who can understand that? You know, have we advertised for?
We are advertising. There are, there is another support person who has, the wheels are in motion, and she's getting training.
So, how long does that program last out, to, for the train?
From start to finish to become a, get your CDL, it's probably about a six-month process, six months.
Well, the, the best, if we got someone on board, or a few people on board, case anything like this would come through. Great, thank you.
Is there any other kinds of questions? All in favor of approving the additional bus transportation? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9B, fund transfer. I move that the board of directors approve a fund transfer of $625,000 from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund 32 for the period ending June 30th, 2016. And the necessary budget transfers among general fund accounts to support the capital project fund transfer.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion?
Can I just question, Amy? Is that date current, June 30th, 2016?
Yes.
Not set.
Sixteen.
Is this money that we had got, gotten unexpectedly from the state that we're putting now into the capital projects for?
From, it was local sources as well. We, some transfer, large transfer sale of Exeter Commons, which we reported last week. So, when you get unusual amounts like that, it's an opportunity to be able to fund your capital projects for the next several years. Thank you.
Any other kinds of questions? All in favor of approving the transfer? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Dr. Bender, personnel?
Part A, we have resignations listed on the agenda. I move that the board of school directors approve or ratify the following resignations listed as: certificate of staff, support staff, and extracurricular staff.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the resignations? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Part B, a retirement. I move that the board of school directors ratify the following retirement of Margaret A. Miranda.
Second.
Motion and second. Hearing none, all in favor of approving Ms. Miranda's retirement? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we wish Ms. Miranda well.
Part C, appointments. I move that the board of school directors approve or ratify the following appointments listed on the agenda for certificate of staff, certificate of substitutes, support staff, support substitutes, and extracurricular staff. And I've listed all the items on the agenda except the guest teacher.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the appointments? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Back to part C. I move that the board of school directors approve the appointment of guest teachers listed on the attachment.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor of approving the appointment of guest teachers? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve the leave of absence listed under part D for certificate of staff and support staff.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the leave of absence? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve the following request for change of status. List under part E for the support staff 1 through 15.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving changes of status? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Part F, staff conferences. I move that the board of school directors approve the staff conferences listed under part F, number 1 through, are we, 23.
I have a second. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving conferences as listed? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors ratify the collective bargain agreement before, between the board of directors of Exeter Township School District and the Exeter Township Education Association, effective July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion?
We have, the representatives of the school board and the teacher association reached a tentative agreement on August 23rd, and I understand that the teacher association voted this afternoon. You have some good news for us?
They voted and ratified the contract.
Thank you.
Good news, we're looking.
We will, that's it.
And that's exclusive, is the president?
Any further discussion?
Oh, just a comment. I'd like to, I, I think that, I think the outcome really does represent good-faith bargaining, and I'd like to extend my thanks to the members of both teams, and this is, if we continue to work collaboratively, it's the way that this district can continue to move forward. Thank you very much, and thank you very much.
We're committed to moving forward.
Any further discussion? All in favor of ratifying contract, approving contract? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Contract is ratified, and thank you very much for everyone's efforts. Thank you, Dr. Bender. Mrs. Kutcher is absent, as another member of the student functions.
Under A, we're just noting that we had a few trips within the 60-mile radius that our students were ever going. We have a few trips that'll be outside, one trip that'll be outside the 60 miles that I'd like to bring up, be the, is recommended that field trip below beyond the 60-mile radius be approved as the senior high wrestling team to travel central, Maryland High School, no offensive, game, county, county wrestling tournament. One day at school, we'll be matched.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion?
Did we say no? We say no, no. It's a no.
Hearing no critical discussion, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have one for center, but the motion still carries.
You get to commit that the entire wrestling. It is recommended the board of school directors approve the request by Joshua Hoyt, doctoral candidate at Newman University, to work with the middle school algebra one teachers as he conducts research as part of his dissertation.
Thank you.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the research request? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the board of school directors approves a personal care assistance service agreement between the Exeter Township School District and Biata Home Health Care Incorporated to provide a personal care aid for a student in the district at a cost of $28 per hour for the 2016-2017 school year.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to know, is this an everyday affair that we're having here, or is it, or on a, on a, on a basis, or medium, school basis?
Seven days do you need to support?
$28 a year, that's gonna, that's ending up at $35,280 a year?
I think it's required by the IUP.
Yeah.
So, we have no option. Any further kinds of questions? It's the law, Mrs. Kujic.
I know.
All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves an agreement with the Chester County Intermediate Unit for services to be rendered by the Brandywine Virtual Academy for full-service online versus computer technology management from August 29th, 2016 to June 18th, June 8th, 2017.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the Brandywine contract? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the board of school directors approves an agreement between Exeter Township School District and Manitow Incorporated, doing business as Laurel Life Services for Exeter Township School District, supported cyber charter, cyber school programs of 2016-17 school year, to assist us with coordinating the Exeter Supported Cyber School.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Is this going to be for both regular ed students and special ed students?
Yes. The supported cyber school?
Yes.
Was it not Manitow programs? The company that run Manitow also helps with the supported cyber school is for regular and special ed students.
That sounds, can you tell us how many students are there now, at this moment?
I don't know.
I'm not at this moment, but maybe tomorrow.
I figured, I believe we have about 12, 13 students there right now.
Do you know the breakdown, special ed classes?
I think right now it's about 2575, about 25%, regular ed and 75% special ed.
So, is that the one that, what we started last year?
This is our third year.
Oh, our third year?
Yeah. And we have one tuition-paying student from another district.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the Laurel Life contract? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the board of school directors approves the request of Ms. Brenda Nanamacher, I hope I pronounced the lady's name correctly, to allow her son Matthew to attend the senior high school as a tuition student for the 2016-2017 school year.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of welcoming Matthew to our fold? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the board of school directors approves a contract between Deveraux Foundation and the Exeter Township School District to provide 1-on-1 services per student number 180648 for the 2016-2017 school year at a cost of $34 per hour.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion?
I was gonna ask where these services take place?
It's at Deveraux, Big Westchester.
So, so this is in addition to the regular school day, or?
This is to support while he's at the school. So, it is in addition to the regular school bill, but it's not out that.
Additional services.
Yes.
Thank you.
He was a resident there, and has since moved back, he's now a senior, so that used to be covered by the district. And he was a resident that had a different district, so this is.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agreement with Deveraux? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the board of school directors approves an agreement between the Exeter Township School District and Kids' Peace National Centers to provide private academic programming to disruptive and special education students for the 2016-2017 school year at a rate of $161.53 per day per student.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm just wondering, well, when we have a contract with these people, is there an opportunity for us to visit these sites on a, on a regular basis, or? I mean, we're not just sending kids somewhere and then leaving it go because we have a contract.
Not at all.
Okay, I, I mean, I've had, I have some real concerns about Kids' Peace because of some things that I've heard about, some staffing issues that they have, and, and what they're doing with kids because they're understaffed. And my real concern then sort of reaches out to all of these contracts, because, one, they're, fiscally, they're a burden on the school district, and, secondly, I just would like to have some sort of process in place so that we, we make sure that we're protecting the best interest of Exeter students, and we make sure that we're protecting the best interest of this school district, so that we know that at least we're getting something for the contracted services.
Right. I think that, as far as the procedure, I think that, well, first of all, there was great effort last year to try to bring as many students back to the district as, as we could. We are limited in our choices here in Berks County, so for, for mental health services, sometimes Kids' Peace is our only option.
Right.
But we do visit, I know Vicki and I have visited schools that we don't use to, to see if it's something we want to use. So, we typically visit a school prior to placing kids there. I go on intake, intake tours with all of the families before we send a student there. And then we're visiting at least, minimally, which we don't do annually for an intake meeting, but we also tend to, we usually. we also tend to, we usually have quarterly meetings to check on progress, and we are able to pop in anytime we want to. When I did check on the staffing concerns with Kids' Peace, I was given a very different story, and I didn't.
No, I understand that.
But I did ask for Dr. Phillips, you know, should I be going out to see this for myself? And he had just asked if we, kind of, the school year was just starting, kind of, for the dust to settle, but I certainly intend to be out there to check on that for myself, and we also have been attempting to move kids out of that placement.
You know, in all fairness to Kids' Peace, I've done visits to the residential community, and I'll tell you, it's extremely impressive, but I've also done visits up here, and what would you expect, if you call somebody and say, are you having a staffing issue, and you're a customer, what do you think they're going to say?
Sure.
Yeah, no, we're not having any staffing issues at all, everything's wonderful. I know that's what I would say if I was in customer service for Kids' Peace, but, no, I just hope, and I know it's a burden on you guys too, I mean, I understand that, we approve, we approve so many contracts that I don't know whether or not we have enough staff to physically visit all of them, as often as I would like to do that.
Well, I just want to assure you that we are at all of them.
Okay.
The only one we may not be at is a kid that a residential placement out into the firm.
Right, sure.
But we are, I mean, yes, we don't have enough staff, it's just us, we do it, we, it's important to us, it's very important to me that I know where my students are and I know what they're getting, both fiscally and for the good of the student and the family.
Right, exactly, exactly.
I tell all of the families, please do not think we're shipping your kid out, and, you know, we're getting rid of them, that anyone who's been in a meeting with me certainly knows that's like the biggest important message for me. We're doing this to try to help your student find a work or replacement so that they can learn the skills to come back, number one goal is always return to the district.
Because, you know, some of these places, these places really pay poorly, and the working conditions are extremely difficult, and they have trouble keeping staff, because they're difficult kids to deal with.
Yes.
So, yeah, I really appreciate your diligence.
From personal experience, I know that our people do go out and visit these alternative schools with alternative questions, and have done it for years.
And we hear it from them, that's how, like, the school will say, we see you a lot more than the other district, and, I mean, I go to art shows, I go to science fair, anything I'm invited to, I try to go, because I want to be present at the school, for the school to know that I'm around watching, and for the student center that we haven't forgotten that.
Yeah, I'm more interested that you would be present when it's not a show.
Oh, for sure, but I just mean, we are around.
Okay.
We are definitely around.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on Kids' Peace?
Is this Kids' Peace up in Bethlehem, or is it in Berks County?
You own Berks County, my name is.
Oh, is it in Berks County? Because I know there's a Kids' Peace up in Bethlehem.
Further discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves Contract Amendment Number One to the Agreement between Pediatric Therapeutic Services and the Exeter Township School District for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, approved May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, adding the services of personal care aids at a cost of twenty-five dollars per hour.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of contracting the services, Pediatric Services of America, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Election and PSBA officers for two thousand seventeen. We can do this either way, there's only one individual for each office, so we could...
I move that the secretary issues a unanimous vote from us.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I don't want to inhibit you if you have reservations or anything like that. Hearing no dissent, no discussion, all in favor of adopting the slate of officers as printed, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Curriculum programs, Mr. Pugh?
No report.
Curriculum committee, Mr. Pugh?
No report, our next meeting will be October fourth, at six-thirty here. Yes.
Technology committee, Mr. Pugh?
I believe that we'll be having a short technology committee meeting prior to curriculum committee on October fourth, starting at six. Make sure you get booted up.
Thank you, sir. BCIU, a normal, excited meeting, we did recognize Senator Judy Swin for her contributions to education in the state, and she's the second person to be, so recognizes outstanding community partner, so it's the only thing of significance that happens quite often. Athletic committee, Mr. Pugh?
Say that fall sports are well underway, and we'd like to thank Matta's Landscaping for the work that they did on this, the new scoreboard stadium, very nice job.
They did some work out of Watten Creek.
Thank you, sir. VCTC, Dr. Aaron?
Nothing to report.
Facilities, Mr. Brady?
We'll be having our next meeting this upcoming Thursday evening, we'll be continuing our discussion on improvements for facilities, upcoming projects we anticipate this year, our budget plus, and we'll also be starting to discuss alternative fuel vehicles and potential use inside of our fleet.
Thank you, sir. Audit committee?
The audit is going on right now, Mr. Malle is here, and can you give us an update as to when it might begin?
They actually finished their onsite work last week, and we wrapped things up via email, so I still have to complete the management's discussion analysis, but we do have to come up with some dates for them to come in either October or November, last year we did it in November, where they can come before a workshop meeting or voting meeting, possibly at five-thirty, and review the off product, they can review the draft, so we could do it in October, and I'll get in touch with the other audit committee members in this function for November, so if you want to let me know what dates we work, should I give them dates of the work? Possibly the voting in October, then two meetings in November, and see if they can get...
Like, as far as already being there?
Yes.
Have you gotten, can you touch base with Mr. Michelat, because I had told you, Dan shared that he wanted to be appointed?
Does he want to start immediately, or to be appointed for committee in two thousand seventeen?
I think he was ready to.
To do right away?
Jump in.
Okay. All right.
And his children do go to our school, so he has never told him in our school, or maybe four, five.
Okay, will they all reach out this week?
This payment of questions, Mr. Brady?
I move that payment request for nine twenty sixteen, I do not have the trouble to announce, and, oh, didn't I put it off? I didn't, I'm standing right there.
Here I will, my copy.
I'm going to bring this off, I'll bring one of those off markers. Please do.
Sorry. That's all.
All right, sorry about that, we have three million, two hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-three cents from the general board.
I have a second, please.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, making payments, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Phillips is in Harrisburg on the school business, David, I'll give you one last opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Good to keep quiet there. For the board, we'd like to make arrangements, we discussed the Act Ninety-three contracts last week, like to recommend that we bring the Act Ninety-three reps in October eleventh, that's the next workshop, at six o'clock, to discuss that contract with them, if there are any people who can't attend, please let John make all the arrangements.
I will not do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other items to come before the board?
Yeah, I would like to bring something up, and I don't know whether or not we can do anything about it, but I just, have, did all of you see the, there was a recent editorial in the Reading Eagle that spoke about, that spoke about that, our idea of hiring a lawyer in order to proceed with the appeal for the zoning issues that we have down at Watten Creek, that that was a bad idea, and when I read that, I just couldn't help but think, this again is an issue of education, what we're doing is, and I want John to verify it, what we're doing is really nothing more than following the process, they lay out the process, we don't make the rules, we're just following the process, and we're looking for someone who is more objective to take a look at our request and the decision rendered on our request, and so I'm just confused about the kind of publicity we're getting from them.
Well, this, the going to the court is the appropriate procedure, it's the only procedure for appealing unless the township supervisors elected to step in and reverse the...
We have an obligation to bus, so we have an obligation to provide an efficient system of busing, and what we propose is what we believe to be the most efficient way of accomplishing this, township disagrees, and so it sort of forces our hand because it doesn't relieve us from the obligation to bus.
The editorial also stated that we're suing the township.
No.
And that's not correct, is it?
No, it's, we're appealing a denial.
Thank you. I just, when I looked at that, I thought, I really don't understand what's happening here, except that apparently we're not, we're either not presenting the information correctly, or someone's just making it up as they go along.
And we did provide an informational letter to the editor of the Eagle.
We didn't print it.
Which you, well, I didn't expect.
Oh, okay, all right.
It was twenty-five hundred words if you're going to send it.
Ah, okay, yeah, yeah, was it twenty-five hundred words?
I don't know, it went on for a long time.
Well, it covered all the efforts we had paid for alternate locations.
I think they give you like two hundred words.
Well, I didn't, I told him at the beginning of the letter, I told the editor at the beginning of the letter that I did not expect her to write it, that this was being provided for his information only, or for his information, and that in the future, should there be any desire to comment on anything, we invited him to contact either myself or the superintendent for additional information, so...
I think it's a misrepresentation of this board's actions, and it concerns me because of how, because of the light that we've been painted to our community.
Well, I think that they don't understand the issue, I mean, they're looking at the cost and expense of improvements, they're not looking at the entitlement or non-entitlement to select where you put the buses, and I think that Bob's letter, which I got a copy of as well, I guess everyone did.
Yeah.
It gave background so that the next time they write an editorial, it'll be more informed.
But...
It's hard to believe that they don't understand the process.
They may write anything they care.
Well...
And I would be the last man to try to control the press, unless I wanted to.
I'm not asking to control the press, I'm just saying, maybe, you know, maybe, maybe we need to do a better job of how we present things, I think at one point at the meeting there was a statement made by one of us that stated that we're suing the township, that's not what we're doing.
Any further items brought up before the board?
Yes, I saw an article in the paper today concerning a charter school, a PA charter school, where they had taken eight million dollars that was supposed to be for the education of the children, and they were siphoning around from their different entities that they have to try to hide, and finally, I guess, the state caught up with them, and so I think, you know, there is so, like, at least here in this district, we are an open book, and anyone can look at our records, and anyone can see our finances, and there needs to be something done about these charter schools, because they are under the radar screen, they are, there is so much fraud and abuse and misuse of public monies for their own profit, I mean, it is unbelievable, I think it's just the tip of the iceberg, so I would hope that legislature would, I know the Attorney, the Audit General has been, you know, asking for them to, you know, clean up their act, in fact, I think the Supreme Court said that we have the worst charter school laws in the nation, and there's just so much abuse, and these children, you know, are not getting the education that they do, that they need, when they're taking eight million dollars of taxpayer money and using it for their own welfare, or for their, I think they said condominiums down in Florida, a house for the mother, and a big house for the girlfriend, so, I mean, it's ridiculous, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board.
Any other issues before the board's, I entertain a motion to adjourn, so, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.